Everything's in line, everything's handled, but it wasn't. And it wasn't until John Gray, the director, that transparency came to the problem. So why did you not say anything? Why did you not step up and do your job?
It was a discussion that never got done. Do you want to file our stuff?
I mean, so we literally, it was just the goal to wait until two weeks prior and just hope like heck that we got it done.
No, that was not the goal. That might have been the, that might be what happened, and that wasn't the goal.
Um, I just know that, to reiterate again for Monday, if one of my employees was emailed ninety-two times and they didn't answer that email, they didn't open that email, and I think I can speak for any other job that anyone else has here, they wouldn't have a job. They would be fired. You have not done your job and done what you're supposed to have done for the citizens. And now, unfortunately, Bates County has a target on their back when it comes to receiving other funding. Because it looks like, as long as Jim Wheatley, luckily Ken Moody's no longer here, but as long as Jim Wheatley and you are still here, we're not going to get any more funding. We've already missed out on funding. John, can you elaborate on how much funding you know that we've missed out on already?
The only things for sure that I can confirm is the LAFCF emails. Like I said earlier, I believe that was fifty thousand a year. How many years? I don't know.
Two, I'll give him about. One more thing, it was fifty thousand, like fifty.
And I know this has been said and answered in different, different ways, but I guess, so, right now, it comes down to, if we receive the rest of the documentation from the ARPA recipients to really clear us of not having to pay back the three million. Right now, we've only partially completed that. Is that correct?
We are very near completion. I mean, when I say very near, I mean probably today, tomorrow. I mean, it's coming quick. The citizens are on board. They want this.
Yeah.
They have no issues turning in receipts, letting us know where they spent their funds. That's, that's not an issue at all.
They have twenty seconds to get their stuff back. So that's, the Treasury Department's not asking for that right now.
Right.
So everything else, okay?
They are, till the end of this year, they've got to spend the money. I do know there's one water district that has a few thousand they haven't spent. There's no way it's not going to be spent this year. So their final receipt or receipts for that will come in later this year. But it's, every, everything, everything I'm seeing, everything I'm finding, all of that, the numbers are adding up. We did have a discrepancy yesterday that I'm sure Jamie and I'll work on, but I also talked to the woman, I won't mention her name, but the woman brought me the receipts and stuff last night, and discussing that over the phone, there was like a six cents difference. So it's, that's enough, six cents. I'll, I'll give them this six cents, I don't care.
Yep. Well, I want to thank you, John Gray, for giving the citizens the transparency that we need and should have gotten this entire time. Yes, and then...
Hi, my name is Auguste Jansen. I just had a really quick question.
Sure.
I heard you say a couple of times that you have hope that they're going to work with us in the future. If Jim Wheatley and the current commission doesn't resign or isn't replaced, and the only thing we've done is turned in reports, why do you have hope they're going to continue to work with the people who didn't follow the rules in the first place?
I do.
It's to be everybody here, like, I want to know whether this hope you're speaking of is coming from when the people that are still representing us put us in this position. And you've turned in a report, it's great. But they're not looking at us any differently. The same people are serving the community. How are we supposed to have hope if they don't trust we're not replacing the people who put us in this position? Where does the hope come from? That's what I need to know.
My first email was by direct contact in the Treasury Department, and this came after a few phone calls. Um, my first email was basically pleading with them, hey, will you please let us work on this? I know you've closed it. Will you please let me do this? I'm new to the office, I'm a newly elected official, yada, yada, yada. I mean, that is basically my plea to them. And she is more than willing to work with us. So I, that, there's my hope. And that, the, our federal government, they want us to succeed. They don't want us to fail. Our state government wants us to succeed. Our state government, our Attorney General, if any of you have an opportunity to meet him, he's a great guy. He loves Missouri. He is for Missouri, period, hands down. We need him as long as we can get him. He is, he is a...
I don't care about him. I care about this community. And the commissioners are serving this community.
Yeah, let me...
I need to know that the federal government has faith in the people serving this community.
Yeah.
And currently, the federal government doesn't because we're in this position. And I, I grant it, our elected officials, great. I'm talking about the elected officials in this community who created this problem. And I want to know, if we want the federal government working for us and wanting our community to build itself back up, what are we doing to show them we're holding the people accountable? If all we're doing is saying, here are the same people, and here we filed our reports, I'm sorry?
Even, even on a state level, we have massive, huge support. So there is great hope there.
So you're saying that the elected officials are supporting our elected officials that put us in this position?
Let me finish, please. I listen to you. Let me finish. Federal, state, we have, our county has amazing support. There's tons of hope there. We have a new commissioner in this office that has replaced one that was involved in all of this mistake. If we want more hope in our community, stand up, run for office, get voted in. In two years, it'll be Jim Wheatley's turn to vote. In four years, it'll be...
No, we don't have to. We don't have to use...
It'll be the... I'm telling you, that's how, if you want change, you've got to elect new people in. And that started, the change has already started. And I hope that there has been much hope given here.
You have good news. Yeah, you have.
Um, so I have written quite a few grants in my time, in my tenure as well. Um, and I don't know, there are some Bates County residents that might know this, there are some that might not. When you submit a grant, they can accept the documentation. It does not mean that they will approve it. There is still a chance that I think Bates County residents need to be aware and informed of, that yes, they've given us this grace period. They have allowed us to go back and do twenty-two, twenty-three, incorporated with a twenty-four deadline. And there is hope that that will get approved. That is not a guarantee, because there was no oversight of the ARPA purchases that were being made. Nor did we collect any of that documentation until this last week. So I think Bates County, one, this is just me informing everyone, just because we've done the documentation finally and we submitted it, that is not a guarantee of approval. There could still be funding that we might have to pay back. There could still be funding that we might penalize because we were late. And I feel like everybody needs to know that. Some do, most do not. We all hold short of the glory of God. I am a walking body testament of that daily. You have, sir, have brought great light to this, and all of Bates County is dearly indebted for that. Thank you so kindly.
I, I work for you guys.
No, we appreciate that.
We see that.
We see that. But Trent, sir, I do not know you personally either, nor do you know me. And I know you said that this would be a, a statement that you would have to think upon. But we are begging you today, right now in this moment, step down. We need you to step down voluntarily. We need you to step down. And I feel like all of Bates County residents are owed that answer. Yes or no right now, so we know how to proceed. Respectfully, do not ask us for you to think on it. Give us, no, let me finish. Give us forty-eight hours, give you a week. We need to know, are we going to allow you to go out with grace and it be your decision to honor us this request? Or if we need to start this petition today? Please give us your answer.
No.
Okay, so you know what we need to do. Thank you.
Tell you a little bit, I've got a statement from that question. My statement would just be, kudos to you, John, for returning transparency and integrity to a public office. It's well overdue. I think that questions that have been asked prove that there's been a extended amount of incompetency. Or, I go back to what I said Monday, they just don't care. I mean, it, when you've got things that you ain't done nothing about for two years, three years, that tells me you don't care. But my question would be, I talked to Mr. Wheatley personally, personally, at eleven-thirty-two yesterday. And I think you almost touched on it, but I'm going to give you a chance to go a little farther. At that point in time, he told me that, quote, "All the money is accounted for except about twenty grand." So I guess my question is, where are we at now?
It's my understanding, I'll let Jamie answer that. It's been...
Go ahead.
Karen went back and researched the minutes. Was that in twenty-one?
I believe it was in twenty-one, right?
But then in twenty-one, the county coroner went over budget. And at that time, the commission transferred money into his budget from the ARPA money to cover that overage. My understanding, he was over budget because, um...
I'll talk to him, he's on the cooler.
And so is that money that did qualify? Is that right?
Yes, it's accounted.
And this is on chat.
But was it a loud expense under the ARPA regulations?
I wasn't hearing that. I'm assuming it was.
Okay.
I wasn't hearing that.
So then we can officially say that all the money is, is, is in line?
Yes.
Okay.
With, with what we have in so far, and here, here's the thing. Commissioners wrote their own application contract, yes. Um, and Jim said it's kind of an application slash contract Monday afternoon. The applicants had to apply for that money. And if the commissioner said, no, you're not qualified, he got kicked out. So anything that has been dispersed to those people, they qualified by what the commissioner said. Their contract, they made their contract. Uh, to tell you, I've read every single word I have not. But I have, I've read so much in the past two weeks, I think more than my whole life together. Uh, but I have no reason to think that we're not going to. And even if, if, and I don't want to put this in anyone's mind, but if there was a problem, we'll take care of it. They're not going to have to. It'll be on the commissioners if there's a problem. And I don't, I don't see that.
Well, I know that you don't really like the public spotlight, and I know that you're way outside of your element here, but we, we really, really appreciate what you've done.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
I am Jaylen Johnson, a LaFolone resident. I do have a question about the ARPA application. I have sunshine those, and I don't recall seeing an application from the coroner's office when I originally sunshine. The numbers that were sent out, that was not on it. And I believe that money was dispersed before the ARPA application was available. Because it was in December of twenty-one.
She is correct. Yeah.
Yeah, we're doing, December of twenty-one. And you can answer that, that I'm not sure. Twenty-one, if it's December of twenty-one, it may have went on twenty-two statements. Possibly. I would have to research that. When was your sunshine request?
Uh, my internet's not working. The grades down here.
She just said that Jaylen was correct, right here from the office.
Yeah, she is correct. There was no application.
And Mr., yeah, and Mr. Wheatley at the time said applications were granted first come, first served, which was not true.
Which is not...
There was applications submitted before that. Um, and also, I believe he denied Chad money, but...
He denied the hospital money.
There was so, I mean, there, there's just a lot of inconsistencies with that. But it does bother me that that, there was never an application, but if he went over budget, so we just moved money, was that legal? Was it?
Nope.
That might, so now we might be on the book for that money because it was potentially not done correctly at all.
I would like to stem on your, you said that we moved that money in twenty, December twenty-one.
I think it was December twenty-nine.
It was December twenty-nine, twenty-three.
Okay. And then you guys made the statement that that might have gone on a twenty-two statement. Um, it has to be above the line, and it was not on twenty-one, so it should not have. If you moved the money over in twenty-one, it should have...
It was on twenty-one, twenty-four.
It was on twenty-one, twenty-four. Yeah, you're kind of getting to a few years back where I don't remember every number or everything.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're in all this, man.
There...
That's another Jim Wheatley slide under the rug. Hope we don't find out. That was a different county.
The applications that come in, to my understanding, there was a lot of picking and choosing. And there again, I think that kind of fell down, there were one person and another. But there again, that's to my understanding. I can't prove that, I can't back it up. And in my opinion, with these ARPA funds, what should have been done with our county, we should have formed a county committee, maybe from every town, especially the ones that got funding. And bring in a businessman from that town, one or two from every town. Let them review these, uh, applications, and let them give the referrals back to the commissioners. And then the commissioners can say, hey, we agree with this. And that was not done. But would have been a really, really good way to protect commissioner, I guess, basically protective commissioner, you know? And it would also put more responsibility in one, because if they don't take the referrals, then here, you want to get that community.
And I will tell you, just for future grant writing purposes, if you guys have any questions on what you can or cannot spend or the grant funding that you received, you can always reach back out to the grant entity that you initially applied for, and you can ask them that question and explain to them what you're using. And they will give you a very fast answer. So that could also be my...
Well, and sometimes it's, you know, I know it's expensive hiring grant writers. Sometimes that's a great avenue, because they know, they do this every day. This is what they do. Um, the expense is cheap insurance for us not screwing something up. And I know that citizens think, well, that's money you could have done. Um, sometimes I would kind of agree with that, but I'm more the one to say, hey, you do this all the time, you need to do that. Let us know.
And they said they would help for five percent, which would be a hundred fifty thousand dollars. We, uh, we can try to do it, save that much money for the county. And, uh, you know, we have the best interest at heart. And these funds, you know, ARPA, water, waste, and water, and tree talk, we help water. We all use water. If you don't, say you don't use water. We help our departments. I have new equipment, so if they have to come into your house on this park, I don't think that's a waste of money. Helping food factories, getting coolers and freezers, filling the food factories. Countless families get food out there. You know, we help the fair a little bit for the, our future youth. We try to help everybody in the county with this money.
My question, you actually, I have a lot of questions, but I'm only going to ask to, I don't, I don't want to take up everybody else's time that may have questions. Um, but you just answered one of my questions. Um, at least in my first reading of the ARPA funds, one of the primary purposes, because it was during COVID, if everybody remembers.
Sure.
Everybody was at home. A lot of people were working from home. All the kids were doing school from home. A lot of stuff going on at home. We didn't have internet, if you lived outside of the city limits, at least not very good internet, if you're in the... Um, so part of that money that was given, um, was suggested by the governor giving it to go towards broadband internet, or as Jim likes to call it, broadband trash. Um, none of the money was given to that. There was an application, asked for money for that from the commission, and the commission denied that. And so why, if, if I give, if my mom gives me money and says, here's ten dollars for lunch, and I go buy drugs with it, my mom's not going to be happy. And I'm not, drugs might be a bad example, because I don't think you, like you said, you didn't waste the money, but you didn't give it where it was suggested to go. So my first question is, why was that denied? It was one of the main purposes of the grant.
The governor, the mayor, at C-Cam, going to overfunds it. You know, the C-Cam, where all the measures get detailed, I'm sure you guys know that. He gave the speech that if the energy ran out of money, then we'll be running for broadband in September, thirty, no matter what. Broadband, we need to push through. That's why we thought we would help the citizens with local problems. Um, you know, the ARPA's request from, uh, from the people that wanted broadband money was quite substantial, you know? Chad wanted some money, which was quite substantial. Uh, we spread it around and helped people. You know, that's our only, if that's my fault for wanting to help, water pipe went from two dollars a foot to eight dollars a foot, you know, meter. Paying water tariffs costs a lot of money, and they'd have to pass that expense on you if it didn't work anyway, so we tried to help everybody with the money.
No, I, I appreciate that answer. It's my understanding, though, um, that the, the folks asking for broadband then made a point that it would show that the county supported this, that would help them secure their funding. And then the county still refused to support it in any way, or the county commission refused to support it in any way. And then, as we repolled broadband trash, it seemed like it was more of a personal attack of, oh, State Valley's not getting any of this money, because we don't want to give it to them. Even though that's where we repolled, we should give it. Maybe not have to give it. I'm not saying we're required to give it to them. But it was heavily suggested that that's where at least some of the money should go, yet they were denied any. Uh, so I want that to be clear. And then my second question, and again, I appreciate you being here. I don't blame you personally, and I'm not trying to attack you personally. But when it comes to the duties of your job, it seems like there's been another failure. And that is why we are all here. And we've shown evidence of the failure. Uh, I mean, I think you admitted today that you had access to the same email that everybody else did. So you as well are responsible for not opening ninety-two of them. Uh, you say Jim kept telling me it was okay. Well, if you can open an email reader for yourself, you can see that it's not. So you still failed to do your duties. Um, whether you want to pass the buck or not, you still have the job to do what you didn't do. And I think it's, there's, there's plenty of evidence to prove that. And that's why we're asking for you to step down, because we have no confidence that you will do your job moving forward. So my question in that is, why would you refuse to step down when the county is saying, we don't want you, we don't trust you, and we would appreciate you stepping down? Why is there an to know? Why would you like us to move forward with the procedure to remove you?
Once again, I love doing what I think about it.
But you don't do it well.
But you're not doing it.
Yeah, you're not doing it.
You're not doing it.
So can we get an honest answer? Why is it ego? I mean, what else? Then why would you say that?
Okay, but why, why, why are you not willing to resign today? You have failed to do your part. Why are you not willing to call quits? Why? That's what we want to know, why? I mean, this comes with a paycheck.
Yeah, you talk about...
No, can I follow the answer honestly? Why are you not willing to resign?
I still want to help the people of the county.
But you're not doing it, so why are you not willing to resign when you're not fulfilling your duties?
And the people of the county are saying, we don't want you to help us anymore. You've got nothing to dismiss. And so in one way or the other, we're searching for your removal. Why would you not take the more graceful? If you say you love the county, the county is asking you to do us a favor. And if you love this, you would do that.
I believe he also gets retirement after you serve two terms. Does that have something to do with it?
You pay in, so what I pay in serves patches. So if I'm finished, I'll pay, I'll get a eight-year term.
There you go.
Which might be three, four hundred dollars a month, that matters. That's my, I've worked my whole life, I still work.
Hello, I'm Chris Love, and my question is, do you, John, we're not here. When were we turned down for the Indigenous People Funds? That you received emails that you were noncompliant?
I just had to come back and look.
So how much was it?
Fifty thousand for two years.
Okay, so how much would that have helped our community? Fifty thousand dollars?
Fifty thousand is still in one of the accounts that everyone has.
But we were turned down because we were noncompliant? Is that accurate?
My husband's insurance, it sounds like maybe it's other.
And you're saying that you received the same emails that Jim Wheatley received? Is that accurate? Why didn't you make sure we were in compliance so you could help our communities that happen?
I can look this this afternoon and find out if you answered that.
What, what year were we turned down for that? Anybody know?
No, unfortunately, I don't have no...
That seems like that would have been a big red flag if I received an email that I was noncompliant or something, and it was my job to be compliant and help my community that I love so much. Why wouldn't you go ahead and take care of the next steps to make sure you were in compliance for the next application?
A lot of the stuff, and this is kind of, a lot of the stuff we did for the county, we did put it out in ways, but when we saved money for the county on different projects, maybe we should...
That's not what I'm asking.
I understand that.
I'm asking if you knew, in your own mind, the county was non, and you were running out of three deals, and you were receiving all of the same emails, why didn't you take the steps and make sure as a team you got in compliance and whenever it's a pipe service, you'd be accepted to that?
I thought it was... Jim was in all of it, all of it.
I, I think that it's not on your best, that you're negligent in your duties by not following that. That's just my opinion.
Did you personally read any of these emails? Did you physically read any of them?
So why did it take John? So why did it take John to bring it to the community's attention? Why didn't you bring it to the community's attention? You had ample amount of opportunities. Why didn't you do that? If you're here for the citizens, why didn't you bring it to the attention of the community? Why did it take John Gray?
Uh, I'm glad it was...
Well, I feel like you keep giving us excuses and you're not answering any of the questions that are being asked.
To retain their job, we need to see action. I mean, we, we don't need to hear about all the inaction. We need to hear about the action to fix the problems that, that happened. Also, I was wondering, Jim Wheatley told us on Monday that he was going to tell us in forty-eight hours if he was stepping down. How do we get that answer? Well, now?
I...
Is this his answer, that he's stepping down because he didn't show up?
That I don't know. I have no idea. I, uh, he, I don't know, but I can't answer Trent, but he's given me no indication that he will ever, ever step down.
Trent, do you think he should step down?
What's that?
Do you think Jim's stepping down? John told us on Monday that he thinks he should step down. Do you?
His decision is, it's, I mean, I don't even.
We ask your.
We're asking your.
I don't, I don't have that.
You serve the people. Take a stand on something, Mr. Nelson.
Yeah.
Take a stand on something.
I think that should be his decision.
No.
What is your answer?
What do you think? You're here for the citizens. What is your opinion? Should he step down?
Well. Probably so.
Okay. Thank you. Quality of the nation.
Hi, I'm Hannah Roderick. Um, we've had many conversations about broadband. Uh, first of all, I want to state that Osage Valley has never been against anything that was approved for ARPA funding. Um, the co-ops in the state of Missouri were very organized about ARPA funding and what probably did more about ARPA funding before the commissioners got information. Um, so we came early and often talking to you about ARPA funding. I have a feeling that you may not know about all the conversations that were had about ARPA funding with Osage Valley. Um, our issue was never that Bates County didn't give us money. Um, our issue was that we were told over and over again that, yes, we, we can have some money for your project, we just don't have much. So we were very blindsided when we did not receive funds. Um, you are probably not aware that Jim and Kenny came out to our office. It is recorded in the, I believe, July twenty twenty two minutes, that they came out to the office and assured us that we would receive funding in the second round of ARPA distribution, which of course did not happen. Um, what we told you, now our initial ask when we came to you was substantial, because the final rules hadn't come down, and at that point in time, that money could not be used for anything but broadband and water and sewer. And so you, you know, were, had a much smaller group of people that could fly for that money. As that opened up, we came back to you and we explained that we are also applying for state funding, which was a much bigger pot of money. And that in order to score higher in the grant application process, if we have funds from our local entities, we'd get much higher scoring because the state and the federal entities said it means a lot to us when the local towns and counties say, this is the people we want building this in our county. And so we had an eighty five million dollar project with a hundred thousand or whatever. By the end of this, we were saying, whatever amount you can give us will help us get these bonus points. Would that hundred thousand have had a big impact? No. But would the fifteen or twenty million or, or whatever was available in state funding, that had a big impact. And that's where, I don't know whether you knew that, whether you understood that, but that is a conversation we had multiple times. It is not about not backing our project. It was about being told that we were getting funding and then not getting funding. About being told we didn't get our application in on time, when the applications, the dates on the applications show that ours was in way before several others that were funded. So was it first come, first served, or, you know, what was the process? So I think it shows a long process of confusion, lack of understanding, uh, mixed messages, and, you know, that is, that is where our disappointment is. It is not that Bates County did not give us money. There were other counties that did not give us money, but they told us from the very get-go, this is what our plans are. We don't think we'll have any earlier project. And if we'd have just been told that upfront, that would have been fine. But that totally changed our construction plans. And so I just want to clarify that we don't, everything that got money, we, we, those are great projects. Our concern is about our community, and all of those things help our community. We can't argue that at all. Um, I just argue the comments that have been made. And, you know, while they're telling us that they're going to give us funding, we hear that they show up, that the members of the commission have showed up to water districts and other meetings going, do you have a project? We're not giving Osage Valley any money. So other people in the county know it before we know it. So that's just some clarification on broadband.
And by not supporting you, what, what she just told us is by Bates County not supporting Osage Valley, it made her money less that comes from the state. It could have made it much more. The state looks at what the commissioners do, and if they're helping locally. And if they don't do that, in her case specifically, there's a score, and that score comes in. I know that there are adjoining counties that Osage Valley is in that did participate and helped her score, but I also know those counties, guess what? They got broadband first. Because they worked with Osage Valley. Go ahead. Thank you, Jim, by the way.
All right. My name is Annie Weyman. I was in Wolf. I am not a lifelong Bates County resident. I moved to Bates County to be the in-house legal counsel and chief compliance officer at the hospital in twenty nineteen. Um, and retired from the hospital. Um, I have heard some folks come up to the podium and ask, how do we rectify the future of Bates County and our reputation with the state and the federal government? There are ways to do that. And some of the questions are about changing the leadership in the commission. And that is true. Um, it's not necessarily through criminally looking for what was done wrong. Forensic audits, figuring out what was wrong. But there is the issue of being able to say to the federal lawyers, to the treasury, to the IRS, to, um, the funding agencies, that we did not have competent leadership and that when you have ninety emails that are not open and we have minutes and a history of three years of what we have history of. And you've seen it, you've heard it for the last three days, and you've been doing this, and you've fixed things in a week and a half.
Two days.
Two days. You can show a level of incompetence.
Amen.
Okay? You can show a level of incompetence. And if you can show that level of incompetence to the leadership and say, listen, I got here on this day, and this is the level of incompetence. And upon discovery, this is what I did, and this, these are the things I've changed, and this is what I brought forth, the chances of you being able to change. The direction and the reputation of Bates County is absolutely doable. But you've got to be willing to say, upon discovery, the yahoos that were here before me were incompetent.
Yep.
And we're not doing the jobs that they were hired to do. And you've got to be willing to say that. And we've got to be willing, as a county, to come up and support this man. And do that for our own salvation.
I don't want to run against Trump, but that could. A little joke in there.
You're the new goat.
My name's Hunter Watson. I'm the trustee for Lono Township. There was a statement made in the last meeting. I wasn't able to attend to, I was working out of town. But, uh, there was a statement made that said that, uh, that the previous commissioner, not including you, John, but the previous commissioner's office made a statement that, uh, we, as a township, were going to maintain private roads. And that, that is correct. They did, they did say that, and they said that at a meeting. They said it several times to the citizens of our township. And, uh, the first time that was said was down at, that's Barquio. There was a meeting, and I believe Jim was passing out votes in meetings. And if we battled that for several years to try and get you guys to understand that you can't use taxpayer money for private property. For years, we battled the guys on that. And I'm saying you, John, as a commissioner's officer.
Yeah, I understand.
But we had to have, the Lono Township had to have a meeting with the commissioners and their attorney. And the attorney had to tell them it was illegal to do that, to use taxpayer money for private property, because I wouldn't believe this. That being said.